All right, welcome to our Fall Town Hall here in Sartell, Minnesota. For those of you who will be remote later, I'm excited to be here before the leaves drop and it starts to get really cold. But no, this is a beautiful office. Always enjoy being here. And I was telling Brian, it's always so bright in here. And that's one of the things I like about this office, very different from Waco where I was previously. They don't have windows in Waco, so. All right, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Jeff Nevin, the CEO of Medowith. Thought I'd start out today just with a little reminder of mission, vision, values. And partially because I don't have a huge update from last time. But but just kind of wanted to walk through, there's a couple of points I wanted to make on here today, right? So our mission is really at the end of the day to.
He's gonna pay attention to that the rest of the time I talk.
I just had eye surgery on one eye last week, and then I get the other eye done next week. So it's just amazing. I spent a bunch of time last night and this morning going through bills and trying to figure out why they're trying to charge me what they're charging me. And getting different information from Blue Cross Blue Shield than I'm getting from the providers, when I call the providers. And it's a very confusing process, right? Because I'm dealing with a surgeon, a surgery center, and an anesthesiologist, and they're all different charges. And they're all competing for my deductible based on who submitted their bill first. And now they're trying to charge me for the second part of the surgery when they really haven't completed the the first part. It's just a reminder of how complicated medical billing is and why we do what we do. And why this organization exists to take care of providers, right? So it is confusing. It is tough. You all do really important work every day. I mean, I'm trying to juggle three or four different people that I'm talking to because it's a disjointed process as well, right? It's different people billing out of the surgery center than out of the physician practice. And so it's just a confusing process. And so I get the frustration firsthand having gone through it. Not that I'd never been through it before. I have. But it's just a nice reminder of how tough this is and how tough your job even is to sort through this. Because I'm sitting here thinking, I've done this for 30 years, and some of this is confusing for me. I can't imagine somebody who doesn't do this every day and doesn't really understand how this all works trying to figure it out. So just a huge thank you to start out with that we couldn't do what we do without the work that you guys do every single day. And our providers wouldn't be successful without the work that you do every single day. So just a nice reminder for our mission. The vision I wanted to touch on, because the vision is more about how do we deliver the mission? And I always kind of come to the bottom sentence of that, right? It's through compassionate experts, innovation and technology. So what I just said, right, compassionate experts, that's everybody in this room and the work that you show up and do every day. We are at a bit of an inflection point in this industry where technology is becoming more and more important. And innovation, just in our society, period, is off the charts. Like AI is advancing how quickly you can do things at an amazing speed. Stuff that we would have thought was breaking, you know, new ground two years ago. Back when we bought an AI company and kind of launched our AI services and Sarah that you see, we thought that was really breaking ground. And we're at a point almost two years later now where the the work we started doing in AI is almost obsolete. And now it's new AI capabilities and new things. It's moving at an incredible pace. And so don't know that I want to do anything or spend any time talking about it other than to acknowledge that and say, we have some challenges ahead of us as an organization to try to figure out how do we embrace that technology? How do we best use it and deploy it to make you all more effective at what you do every single day? And jobs are going to change and be a little different over time, right? I think what we're going to see is some of the simpler things are going to get automated. You're going to be left with the more complex things like the one I just described, that I can't figure out how to get three providers to talk to each other to divide up, you know, a deductible and a max out of pocket and all those kinds of things, right? So that's the more complex work that we're going to end up doing another two years down the road. But just an acknowledgement that those last couple of things, innovation and technology, are going to make or break a lot of companies in this industry. And what I'll tell you is Medowith is not the biggest player in this space. But I think we are further along in AI and embracing technology than anybody else. So you can go out and look at, like, I'll pick on the biggest competitor in the spaces are one. They're a big publicly traded, well, they're not publicly traded any longer, but they were a big publicly traded company. They're now private. They are a billion dollar plus company. They're really big. They're talking about just beginning to engage in utilizing AI. And they've hired this third party name or second party maybe named Palantir to help them in that journey. So they're out making these big splashy statements that, oh, we're going to automate all these things in the revenue cycle. And then when you go in and look at what they've actually done, they haven't even started. So I feel good that we have this kind of two-year head start. We have embraced the technology. But we have got to keep innovating faster than our competitors to stay kind of the the best and brightest out there, so to speak. And then, look, at the end of the day, I think what makes an organization an organization is whether or not you live your values. Do you have values? Do you live them? Do you think about them every day? These are important to me. Every time I interview somebody new coming into the company, I try to interview kind of our director level and up candidates coming into the company personally. That's really what I interview for. I'm not interviewing for what was your background and show me your experience or what you did or didn't do. I want to know if you're going to be successful in this company and you're going to fit in our culture and be a positive contributor and live these values every single day. That's really what's most important to me when I wake up every day is are we doing the right things? Are we living with integrity? Are we focused on, you know, our clients delivering better results for them, all those kinds of things? All right, so thought I'd just start there. I don't have a ton of update.
Scroll.
Oh, down. I don't have a ton of new information. And what I do have isn't all great information to share, unfortunately. So there are a lot of things going well. If you go to the chart on the right, the biggest struggle right now that we have is, I think, last time when I talked to us, we were down a couple of percent. We're now down 6% year-over-year in kind of revenue generation, right? So our revenue, our sales are declining. And we have one bright spot, which is early out. I think that's probably most of the folks in this room. How many are early out? Fair number. Okay, so early out is going pretty well. I'll talk about why in a minute. Bad debt, this is like year four or five in a row that we've seen this kind of decline. What we were hoping is that in the second half of this year, bad debt would kind of flatten out. It wouldn't be any worse than last year. We'd be the same as last year. It doesn't look like that's happening. So as providers are getting better at collecting upfront, as we're doing better in early out, which is the area we're doing well, it's harder and harder to collect a dollar in bad debt. What we are seeing now is like the average account that gets to bad debt is probably 60 days older than it was a year ago. It's $100, $50 to $100 higher balance. So it's less, it's lower quality inventory. It's harder to collect business, period, at the end of the day. So we are unfortunately seeing that kind of continue to decline a little bit. Insurance was our big growth engine for the last two, three years, and it's now down 16% year-over-year. I'll talk about a couple of things going on there in a minute. But we've lost some clients. We've had some changes with very large clients. And so I think this is a short-term thing. I don't think this is going to be down 16% again next year. We're recovering from it, but it's hurting us this year and where we're at this year. So candidly, expenses are down 2.7%. That's good. Again, oftentimes, we don't see expenses go down year-over-year. Most of that is in bad debt. We made a big push to go digital over the last year. So we don't send statements to patients in the mail anymore. We text them. We email them. We've gotten away from the US mail. We spend millions of dollars. We're one of the biggest utilizers of postage in the United States when it comes to healthcare. So we have gotten away from that. That's really what's driving the expense decrease. So yay that we're down 2.7%. We were hoping to be down 2.7% on a revenue increase, not a revenue decline. That's more than washing away any expenses that we're saving, unfortunately. If there's some good news, it's that sales is trending pretty close to what we hoped we would do this year. We were hoping to have the second-best year in the history of the company after our best year last year. We do look like we're on track to do that. We continue to grow across all the service lines, really. Early out's the one area that we haven't had as much growth so far this year in sales. And we have one big customer that we continue to wait to go live. And then our client attrition, we expected to be about 8% of our revenue, and we are right on track to do that. So I don't think we have lost a significant client in the last 90 days or so. So that is good news and relatively good trend. So sales look good. Client retention looks good. Unfortunately, the clients that we lost prior to that don't look so good. And same-store revenues being down are a little challenging. All right, so let's start with the good. Early out, we're up 2%, right? That is 100% because of our performance. Our volume, our placement volumes are actually down year-over-year. Our recovery rates have gone from 18.6% through the first eight months last year to 21.2% through the first eight months this year. So we are collecting more money on the business that we're given from our clients. That's what's driving the 2% revenue increase. It's not some big new client. In fact, you know, we did expand early in the year with MultiCare. Endeavor is the client that we had a signed contract with. I think it was signed back in November of 2024, and it's still not live yet. So it is a, it will be one of the 10 biggest early out customers we have when we can get it live. But that's what we were projecting for our growth engine for early out this year. We weren't really expecting the same-store recovery rate increases that we are seeing, so we're excited to see that. That's great news. That's, again, I think, come through a big focus on quality, making sure that we're asking for money on every single call, really trying to push for that. That's what's kind of keeping us afloat this year. When we can finally get Endeavor engaged and live, and we still hope to get that live before the end of the year. We're having conversations back and forth with them. Just, you know, Endeavor is a big organization in the Chicago area. They went through an epic conversion. So the messaging we've been getting from them is their entire IT staff is dedicated to the epic conversion. And they just don't have the resources to get our project live. They still want to move forward. They're so excited to work with Medowith. They just don't have the resources. What we're hearing is those resources are starting to free up as they just are coming to the end of their epic conversion. So we're hopeful we can still get this live before the end of the year. This year is kind of lost, but that'll be nice growth for us to get into the the start of 2026 at least. All right, bad debt. So I probably said most of what there is to say about this. We continue to see the same-store declines. We have had some sales. We're actually selling business. No difference from what I talked about last time. We believe our performance is leading the industry in bad debt. Every indicator we get, we're winning head-to-head competitions against other agencies out there. We're hearing continuously from people that our results are the best that they're seeing from anyone. From consulting firms are telling us that. Others who are, you know, vendor management organizations who see multiple bad debt agencies and their performance are all telling us that our performance is the best out there. So that's good news, but our performance is the best out there. It's still declining. So again, you've probably heard me refer to it before. We're the slowest melting ice cube in the glass in bad debt right now. So we're doing better than everybody else. Everybody's melting faster than us, but we're still melting. So it's painful. Again, this is where we have all the cost savings. And we have wiped out every dollar of cost savings by losing money on the the top line, on the revenue side of the fence, just because our collections are going down. Again, another 16, 17% this year versus where they were last year. Again, we've sold a fair amount of new business. We've probably sold 10% growth. But that's offset by a 10% placement volume decline too, because we're doing a better job collecting upfront. So a lot of the good work here that unfortunately is just kind of getting washed out. There are two kind of big events going on in bad debt. One is we are constantly searching for how do we do a better job of collecting, right? It's what we're in the business to do at the end of the day. So how do we do a better job of it? In the day and age of cell phones and now carriers starting to label calls as spam. I know you've all seen it on your cell phone, right? You can block it super easy now. It pops up and it doesn't even tell you who's calling. It just says probable spam or spam or whatever, right? I don't know about anybody in this room, but I don't answer those calls. I just send them straight to voicemail, right? So when we're calling out, the same thing is happening to us. They're not, we can't say we're a collection agency, first of all, which is part of the problem. That's a violation of federal law, so we can't say that. But when we just pop up the 800 number, it's getting labeled as spam. So that's becoming challenging for us. We have found a way around that. There are organizations and companies, it's actually a business model, that they contract with the telephone carriers. So they contract with Verizon or AT&amp;T or whoever your phone carrier is. They specifically call, they do what's called whitelisting. So they label and say, anybody who filters a number through me, you promise not to block if you're the carrier. And they pay a fee for that. So we pay these companies a fee who turn around and pay the carriers a fee so that when we start making calls and we're just beginning to do this this week, I think, when we make a call, it won't get labeled as spam anymore. Again, it's not going to pop up who we are, but it at least won't get labeled as spam. So if you think about the calls that we do, people answer the phone 1% of the time on the outbound calls we do. We're hoping to double that and get it to 2%. And we think if we could do that, that's going to make a material difference in our ability to talk to people. And we know that when we talk to people, we have about a, somewhere between a 25% to 30% success rate in getting them to pay something toward their bill. So if we can just talk to more people, we believe that, you know, we're going to get more payments and that's going to get us better results. So that's our big focus here between now and the end of the year in bad debt. The other thing that we just completed is we had one group, Avidyne's bad debt group, that was still on Cubs Technology is what it's called. We've converted them to FAX. So as of right now, 100% of our bad debt business is on FAX. It's on a single platform. Bad debt is the first group that we've been able to get to one technology system and one technology platform. Excited about that. You're gonna hear me talk in a minute about doing that in insurance and early out as well. All right, insurance. So this is the one that was a bit of a surprise for us, right? We're expecting, again, kind of 30% growth, 25% growth, something pretty big like we had seen over the last two, three years in the service line. And we're going the opposite way, obviously. So two things really driving the the reduction. I'll, I'll start with the easier one, which is just client attrition. So we have lost a name that'll probably be familiar here. Alina was a customer that we were doing a bunch of business with here. There were similar contracts with customers called Onslow and I'm forgetting the other one off the top of my head right now. Blanchard Valley is the other one. So we had three large clients that were probably contracting with us for somewhere between 10 and 20 people a month to work their business. Well, what we figured out is when you contract on a per-person-per-month basis, it's just not sticky. And so they went through their budgeting process. It's like hiring a temp agency to fill a position, right? You overpay for the person you're hiring, but you do it anyway because you need somebody in that role. So that's what they were doing with us. They woke up after using us for a year and said, we're spending how much money with these guys? Wait, we could just go hire 20 people for ourselves and save a third of that cost, right? So it's tough times at this point in healthcare. Everybody's looking for where can they save money and where can they save costs? Those are the easiest things to cut, right? Instead of paying these guys for 20 people, I'll just go hire 20 people myself and save money. So I think those were our biggest contracts. We've lost all of them now. I don't think, you know, we're really actively looking to contract per FT per month anymore. We're saying, look, you use our technology or you don't use our technology. You outsource the business to us and let us do it our way, but we're not going to just kind of rent people for a month at a time anymore. The one that's a little tougher, so Christus, which we just signed a year ago, overnight became our largest insurance customer and our second-largest customer in the entire company. From the numbers I've seen, we collected somewhere between 50 and 80 million dollars more in the first 12 months after they hired us than they were collecting on that business ourselves. First time in my career that my thank you note was, we're going to cut your business. Thanks for the 58 million dollars. We're gonna essentially cut your business in half. So they went through their fiscal year-end planning session and decided that having all of their under $10,000 insurance business with a single vendor was too big of a risk for them as an organization and decided to hire a competitor to give 50% of that business to. Then in addition to that, they decided we were getting too much easy money in the first 30 days and they moved the the age of placement back from day 30. We were getting all their accounts under 10,000 day 30. They moved it back to day 60. So the net-net of that is that we're only getting about a third of the business from Christus that we were getting a year ago between those two changes. So we lost half to a competitor. We're getting the accounts 30 days later. It's a huge material hit. I can't even begin to describe how much this one hurts our organization. That is a big, big loss for us. Now, look, we're hopeful that our performance wins the day. We have a year-head start on the competitor that they're bringing in. We're hoping that three, four months down the road, they're going to see that we are so outperforming the competitor that they are wasting money continuing to use this other company. And we can earn some of the business, if not all of it, back, right? Again, first time I've delivered results like that to somebody in our thank you card was, yeah, we're going to do less business with you instead of more. It's disappointing. I mean, I don't even know how to describe that one other than to just say probably the most disappointing thing that's happened to our organization the last five, 10 years. We've done great work here and didn't continue to do great work. So again, you heard me say earlier, I think some of this is temporary. We have several new clients that are live. We've got a couple of work downs in Bellon and Aspiris. That's about a year project, right? That's here today, gone tomorrow, but it will help us fill the gap here in the short term. University of Cincinnati is a pretty large project. I think we're getting all of their small balance accounts under $2,000 or $3,000. That should be a nice-sized customer for us, probably a top 20-sized customer. And then, again, I think this is a vote of confidence that we're doing great work in insurance. We have two existing customers. One is Trinity and the other one is Unity Point in Iowa. Unity Point bought a hospital from Trinity and both organizations said, it's kind of an interesting setup. Trinity says, you can't have access to the system Unity Point. Unity Point says, well, in a year, we're going to convert these guys over to Epic because that's what we're on. And so in the gap, we need somebody to manage the entire revenue cycle, including billing all the way back through the backend. So we just signed a contract, I think, last week or the week before with Mercy One in Sioux City. So that will be, again, it's only going to be probably a year, year and a half. We'll probably have that through the end of 2026. But again, we're hoping we can show them that we're doing good enough work that maybe we can work that into a small balance project with all of Unity Point or all of Trinity or something like that as well, right? These are two big organizations that have worked with Medowith for years that gave us a vote of trust. They didn't even look at any other companies to do this business. They said, you're the company we want to do this work. We're going to give it to you. And so, again, we hope we can not only do a great job with that work, but flip it into something bigger and better as well. The other things going on in insurance right now, you heard me talk about the inflection point with technology. We are spending a lot of time with our development team building out the Benchmark platform today. So does anybody in the room work on Benchmark today? Hands. No, nobody today? All right, so one, okay. So most of you probably have not seen Benchmark yet. It's primarily, well, it's really only an insurance platform today. We're talking about building it out for things past insurance. But it is going to be our primary insurance platform of the future. And we are building out capability to go all the way from billing to the final resolution of an insurance account on that platform, including the ability to do intensive denial management on that platform. That work is probably going to be completed sometime in the next 30 days by our development team. So again, you're probably not going to start to see it overnight unless you're on Benchmark today with this group. We're on pilot the new product with Christus. And then we will quickly roll it out to the other clients from there. But we're close to being finished with that work. And so there's, there's definitely some exciting new functionality, just that we'll be able to understand denials better, route them better, provide very detailed reporting on denials. Like, for example, if you know anything about insurance, one of the most common denials might be like a timely filing denial. But the reality is the claim wasn't denied for timely filing. It was first denied for a medical necessity issue. And then it sat for 90 days and then got turned around and now it's timely filing or now it's duplicate claim. So most of our competitors will just take whatever the most recent status is and report that as the denial reason. We're going, we're introducing some big data capabilities to track every single denial within a claim at a detailed level and go back and say, no, no, the true reason you lost this revenue provider is because you didn't do the medical necessity on the front end, right? This has nothing to do with a timely filing issue. This has nothing to do with, you know, maybe duplicate claim issue or whatever, right? And that'll help our staff as well to try to figure out what's the real reason something's going on. The other thing we are going to start working on once we finish that work, well, the other piece of it, which probably won't be ready till sometime in the middle of the fourth quarter, is we're going to create valuations on accounts. So what that means is every account that is given to us in insurance, we're going to look at our 10-year historical database of who's the payer, what's the age, what's the status of the account? Why is it sitting out here still? And come up with a probability that we're going to be able to collect that account. Then if you multiply that by the balance of the account, you can come up with a, hey, here's an account that's worth $5,000 and here's an account that's worth $2. So which account do you want to work? One more $5,000 account, right? So we're going to start stack ranking our work queues by the most valuable accounts to the least valuable accounts so that we're not wasting our time chasing something that's never going to pay and never going to generate money for our provider customers at the end of the day. So those are the things that are in development that are going to be released by the end of this year. Once that's done, then the question is where do we go with this next year? So there, there's two things I'm going to talk about quickly. One is called Agentic AI and the other one is Generative AI. So Agentic AI kind of gives you guidance on what the best path would be. So if you went out and said, you know, ChatGPT, I have three options. Tell me the good and the bad about every option, right? It's going to come back and give you some sort of information. What we want to do with Agentic AI is when an account pops up to you to work the account, we give you, here are three action codes you can use that are the most likely to drive a collection result on this account. And here are the three action codes that we don't recommend that you use because they haven't been effective in the past. So starting to guide the effort so that you have immediate kind of ideas about, okay, what should I do with this account? What's the action code I should apply? Where should I go with this next to get it done? Next piece is Generative AI. So Generative AI is basically if I went out to ChatGPT and said, write me a paper on X, right? So what we can do today with Generative AI is say, we can go back and look at a library of successful appeals where we got the appeal, we won the appeal, we got the account paid. And we can look at a library of accounts where we failed in the appeal. And we can say, instead of us starting from scratch and writing an appeal letter, generate an appeal letter for us that has the highest probability of success. And then instead of you writing an appeal letter from scratch, you're, it's more supervising the process. And you're looking at the appeal letter and saying, okay, I just want to make sure before I send this out the door, it makes sense, right? Because you've seen AI come up with some wonky stuff too, right? So it's not that far advanced yet. It's still in its early learning stages and things like that. But that's where we're going to go in 2026 with this technology. So we are at this inflection point where we've got to embrace this. And it's going to drive sort of what I'm calling an upscaling. It's more of knowledge work process at that point and less of the typing and doing process, right? You're going to be supervising the the process of getting an account collected instead of doing the work to get the account collected. Does that make sense? All right, and as I said, eventually, all of our insurance work, once we get this built, I think it's going to be the most powerful platform in the marketplace. And all of our work is going to go onto that platform across all of insurance. I know, like, we have a lot of work on Artiva today. I think Artiva is actually our biggest insurance platform. It's a pretty successful platform. It will probably be the last one we move to Benchmark, but we will eventually move everything into Benchmark and Insurance. All right. There we go. All right, so I talked about a lot of these already, kind of hit on Benchmark and where we're going next with that. We are going to continue to consolidate operating systems by service lines. So again, rah rah, we just did that with bad debt. We're excited to be on FAX and bad debt. We don't necessarily have a winning platform in early out yet, but we are migrating there too. So we have Management, which is our team in Moline, Illinois, that works on Cubs. Cubs is actually going away. The the technology company has said they are, they own, by the way, FAX, Artiva and Cubs. And they have said, we are sunsetting Cubs in June of 2026. You can't use it anymore after June 2026. So we have to move that to something else. CRS is the platform we use in Charlotte. That is an old platform. We are actively moving that to Artiva right now. In fact, I think Conway is the first customer that we've moved over to Artiva. So that platform is moving into Artiva. When we're done with that migration, we'll sunset that platform, the CRS platform. And so, you know, the other one is we are on, we'll kind of be at that point on FAX, but multiple versions of FAX, Artiva and Collect One out in California. So we will probably start to consolidate some of the FAX platforms as well into just moving from the three versions of FAX to less than three versions of FAX. But we're continuing to consolidate that early out business as well. We're trying to continue to improve our reporting. We're looking at all kinds of options. This may not be meaningful if you're not in management, but I know we have like Sigma today for reporting. may not be meaningful if you're not in management, but I know we have like Sigma today for reporting. We're looking at some options to move away from Sigma to some other platforms, like maybe a Microsoft platform or even another third-party rev cycle platform that we're looking at, but something that provides more flexibility. So today, if you use our reporting platform, it gives you kind of a static image. And if you want to sort or do anything with the data, you have to probably drop it into an Excel spreadsheet and then do the work in the Excel spreadsheet. What we're trying to move into is a platform where you could do sorts and changes like you do in Excel within the actual reporting platform itself. So we are looking at upgrades to that platform. And then beyond just the technology that I described, we're trying to figure out from marketing and sales strategy and things like that, how we grow into full back office outsourcing and denials management. So how is that different than what we do today? Again, some of you may have exposure to this. I know Northern Montana is a full back office outsourced customer. UCSF, Marin Physician Group is a full back office outsourced customer. Mercy One, who we just signed, will be a full back office outsourced customer. We think there is a marketplace that isn't getting hit by our competitors, that is kind of the standalone, what I would call mid-market rural hospitals. And there are thousands of them all over the United States. They're going to get the hardest by, hit hardest by the Medicaid cuts and the big beautiful bill that just got passed. There are pretty significant Medicaid cuts that will happen in 20, really the kick in mostly in 2027. But there are also folks that are on the market plans, the ACA plans, are going to lose their subsidies for care basically starting immediately, I think, starting October 1st. So we're going to see a big push in people who were insured one way or another in the past to being uninsured. And that's going to put a lot of pressure on standalone hospitals all over the country, right? Look, big networks like Health Partners in Minneapolis are probably going to be fine. Little community hospitals are going to struggle. So we are really focusing on trying to get out to those hospitals in 2026 and say, don't fight this fight yourself. You guys aren't big enough and powerful enough to go toe-to-toe with the insurance companies and their AI. We have AI that will go toe-to-toe with the insurance companies. Bring us in to manage your revenue cycle for you. Again, so you can focus on patient care and taking care of patients and you can keep your community hospital intact. And so as we're going through this and pulling up marketing material, what we're seeing is kind of case study after case study of these mid-market hospitals that either had to merge and get bought out by a bigger health system or shut down and go out of business. Neither one of those is probably the best thing for that community, right? So if we can come in and say, give us your revenue cycle. And candidly, if you have people doing that work today, we'll take those folks, right? They can be part of our team and just continue to work from home or continue to work in your office. But we want them to start to use our technology and our capabilities because we think that's the difference maker. So we are really trying to figure out how to get that message out in the marketplace, how to convince these hospitals that the worst thing you can do is just sit here and do nothing. Make a bold move, right? The reimbursement challenges are coming, whether you like it or not. Do something today. Don't wait until it's too late to do something. And then denials management, really the change there is typically today with insurance, we're getting an outsource at a particular age, like people are giving us their accounts at day 30 or day 90 or day 180. We are putting together a go-to-market strategy to say, give us your accounts when they deny. So you go ahead and bill them, and if they auto pay, they auto pay. But the minute the account denies, give it to us. Whether that's day 15, day 45, day 60, don't create some arbitrary time that you give us the accounts. Give it to us when the hard work needs to start. And again, then we can employ our experts, our technology to get that account collected for you that you don't have in-house in your own team today. So those are the two things we're, we're focused on to try to drive growth in the organization. And then I'll turn it over to Tracy here in a couple of minutes, but we're continuing to, continuing to focus on being a great place to work, right? I mean, as I started with, you all make the difference every single day. We want you to be excited to come to work every day. We want you to be excited to be a part of the organization we are. We were excited that recently RMP got named to Best Places to Work for Women. So that was exciting for us. We are looking at trying to apply to more and more of these best places to work to get awards and accolades along those lines. All right. Going to end with the honest picture though and hit this one on the head. So I know there are some people, maybe some of you in the room, certainly some people that'll see this by video, who didn't get a merit increase in the last 30, 60 days when we did those. Some people are getting bigger bonuses and we did some different things to kind of do pay-for-performance, to enhance the pay-for-performance plans. For those of you who are in kind of revenue generating, collection types of positions, but some of the folks in our support positions I know didn't get the 2% raise. And we are in, again, for all the reasons I just went through, right? We weren't expecting Bad Debt to decline again in the second half of the year. We didn't see the Christus hit coming to us. We have to have certain levels of cash flow to meet our bank requirements. So we have quarterly, quarterly principal and interest payments that are due to the bank, just like your mortgage payment, your car payment, whatever, right? We have to pay on the money that we've borrowed from the bank on a quarterly basis. The difference is unlike your mortgage payment and things, you don't have to show your financial statements or you don't have to show your paycheck every quarter to your bank. You just have to make the payment, right? We have to show our, our financial statements to the bank in addition to making the payment. So for us to be able to hit a couple of ratios that we're required to hit for the bank and not have to pay additional penalties and things like that, we have to tighten our belts a little bit. So the rest of this year, we are definitely looking at where can we cut costs? How do we try to offset some of this revenue decline that you're seeing here that's hurting us as an organization right now? Again, look, I think this is a short-term problem. We're in the process right now of trying to refinance our debt with a new lender group, which will give us more time. It'll give us easier ratios to hit going forward so that we don't have to do things like this. But we are in this kind of period because of these unexpected things that happened where we got to tighten the belt a little bit for a few months and get through the next two rounds probably of bank ratios. We've got one coming up in a couple, well, a week almost now here at the end of Q3. And then we've got another one at the end of the year that we've got to hit where we have to have certain amounts of cash on hand or the bank can kind of do a variety of things. They can penalize us financially. They can come in and take an equity stake in the company. There's all, all kinds of things that we don't necessarily want to happen. So that's the reasoning behind why we didn't do the 2% increase for the support staff. Not going to say that's necessarily gone forever. We're looking at all kinds of options here. That's not our desire to not give people an annual raise, certainly. I mean, I want to be able to do that. We just had to make some tough decisions in the last couple of months here. All right. I will turn it to Tracy. Talk about human resource and then we'll take questions at the end.
Good morning, everyone again. So for those of you that don't know me, I'm Tracy White. I'm the SVP of HR. It's good to be here again. I was here just a couple of months or so ago. So, but again, always good to be in Sartell. And I'm with Jeff. I'm glad that it's not cold here yet. So, because it gets much colder here than it does in Charlotte, North Carolina. So, but you'll see me again. So hopefully when there's not, you know, foot of snow on the ground. So a couple of things that I want to talk about is what's happening in HR. I'll talk about some turnover numbers within the organization. I'm going to also talk a little bit more about the best places to work for women, accolades that we just received, conclusion of 2025 Employee Appreciation Week. Talk a little bit about that. That was just last week. So hopefully everybody had a good time. I'm also going to talk about Motivosity that's now live and hopefully everyone's taking part in that. And then also what's next for the rest of the year. So, so turnover. So I, I have this chart in the last presentation that I did. And if you look at our historical turnover in 2022, of course, that was just coming off of COVID and, and getting back into kind of a normalcy effect. And everybody's kind of, you know, going to change jobs and things of that nature. And if you look at our turnover year-to-date, and this of course was as of the end of August. So for the first eight months of the year in 2022, we were at almost 65% turnover, which is a lot. That's a huge turnover rate, especially when you look at the average headcount with 1,611 employees during that time. That's a lot of turnover. 2023, it came down very minimally. Really not much at all. And we also had a higher headcount of 1,628 folks during that time. 2024 got a little bit better. In 2025, it's actually gotten a lot better. So a lot of people would be like, okay, what's different? What are you doing? You know? And a lot of this goes back to some of the things I've talked about in the last town hall, is we've put in the new hired concierge. So we were really, you know, trying to reach out to new hires, making sure that once they accept the offer, there's communication all the way through day one, and then continued communication through the first 90 days. So for those of you that are with us for the last, you know, less than 90 days in this room, hopefully you are participating and have had those contacts with our new hired concierge program. We also have done a lot of training with, not only with the supervisors and managers in recruiting, but also with our recruiting staff to make sure that they are doing a much better job in finding the right candidates. You know, we want to make sure that people truly understand what, what job it is that they're going to be doing. And some of that really wasn't happening early on. So we wanted to make sure that our employees that we're hiring know the job, are excited about the job and know what to expect when they get here. So that's some of the things that we've been doing. Also, of course, I introduced Ashley, who is our new manager of employee engagement culture, who's been helping a lot with some of the initiatives. You know, she's also been taking a large part in some of the activities and some of the initiatives and even the Employee Appreciation Week this last week. So a lot of things going on. We're trying to make sure that we're, we're doing all the right things to get the right people and have happy employees. So year-to-date, we're actually at 30.36% as of the end of August, so first eight months. That's a lot better than what we've been doing historically. So we want to keep that trend. Would love to see that continue to drop, but we'll see what the rest of the year looks like at the end of the year when we do the next town hall. So, good job, everybody. Like Jeff said, we got the accolades for the 2025 Best Places to Work for Women. So in the last town hall, I talked about how we participated in the best places to work in collections. And the way that the company is structured, we have different businesses underneath the Medawitt umbrella. And the RMP group, which is probably a good portion of people in this room, we, we, let me back up. The RMP group is the largest group of employees in a business setting that we have that falls under the collections grouping. And there's over 700 of the roughly 1,500 employees fall into that grouping. So those 700-plus employees were the ones that potentially were selected to be surveyed. Hopefully some of you in this room were able to take that survey that was earlier in the year. We learned a lot about the ACA, the, the best places to work in collections, ACA. And from that, the best companies group came back to us and said, hey, I know you didn't win any accolades or awards for best places to work in collections. However, based on your demographics, the, the results that you got from those surveys, we would highly recommend that you participate in best places to work for women. Because you hit a lot of those key highlights that our best places to work for women hit, which is we have a large number percentage-wise of females in the company. Somewhere close to 90% of the entire organization is female. We also offer either remote work or hybrid work, things that, things like that, that people really, you know, want to have in best places to work for women. So we said, sure, let's participate. So we put that out there and lo and behold, we, we got to have that accolade given to us. So we're very happy with that. We actually have an award ceremony that a number of people in the organization will be participating in later in the month. Actually, it's next week. It's a remote participation and we'll learn at that point in time, actually where we kind of ranked and how we ranked based on the size of our organization. So we don't know exactly how we ranked and we don't have the full results yet, but we, we will learn more by the end of this month. So happy to get that. We'll continue to, to work with the results that we have from both of these awards that we've participated in and try to make progress going forward as to how we can better, how can we continue the trend that we've got right now. So of course, we just finished the Employee Appreciation Week. And so I wanted to give some, some, some results of things that happened. So on Monday, I believe it was of last week, we did Color for a Cause. It was Monday or Tuesday. I can't remember. We did Color for a Cause and we asked people to, you know, wear the color depending upon the cause that you, you actually wanted to support. And the different causes were Breast Cancer Awareness, Autism Speaks, Alzheimer's Association and American Red Cross. So for those employees that actually did their pictures, sent them in, we tallied up the votes and, and divided the, the money that we were going to support these causes with. And 34% went to Breast Cancer Awareness, 27% went to Autism Speaks, 25% to Alzheimer's Association and 13% went to American Red Cross. So in total, that equaled to $7,500 that we gave to those various organizations. The good thing is, is some of these, we actually tried to piggyback on. They were having initiatives to where different organizations might match that. So we actually, some of these actually got doubled or even tripled based on other organizations that were willing to help match or, or double them. So, so good job, everybody. Then, all right, there we go. Some of the pictures. So some of the fun that everybody was having. So one, I know on Wednesday night, we had pet show and tell. So one thing that we learned is a lot of employees have cats. And I heard someone earlier at a table talking about kittens and wanting kittens and, and different cats. So actually, a lot of our employees have cats. So I know that was a lot of fun. And then the one here on the bottom right was actually one of the, I don't know, I think that was the DJ or was it Game Night? That might've been Game Night, Monday night. And then the bottom left was some of our Color for a Cause. Actually, that might've been Color for a Cause too. So we, we are actually trying to get a lot of these pictures together. We put them on our internet. We also are putting them on a Motivosity. So I want to thank everyone here because, you know, it's not just entitled to a week. Employee appreciation should be all year long, but we actually like to have a week of where it's a lot of fun, a lot of activities. So for those of you that actually participated in the evening activities, thank you very much for doing so, taking time out of your day, enjoying some time with your other coworkers. For those of you that didn't participate, you missed out on a lot of fun. So I'm hoping that next year during Employee Appreciation Week, everyone will participate even more in some of the evening activities when they hear all the fun stuff that went on this year. And it is a little bit of different approach than what we've done in the past. So I know we've been very kind of, I know you guys had your own things going on during the week last week, which was great. And, you know, the company would do a couple of different things that was consistent across locations, but we really wanted to get some camaraderie between the locations for you to have an opportunity to actually maybe get to know or see people from other offices, even though it's virtually. And, you know, you don't always get to do that. So hopefully you had some fun. Hopefully you got to meet some people that you hadn't met before. And again, next year, we'll do something different. We'll learn from this year and see what worked and what didn't. Also, to conclude the week, as of the 22nd, which I don't, was that yesterday or the day before? Everyone got a $10 added to their Motivosity account. So appreciation bucks. And that is something that I'm also going to talk about in the next slide is Motivosity. So for those of you that have not logged into your Motivosity, you better do so because you've got some bucks sitting there that you can use. And as of 9/19, so just last week, we had 58% utilization already in Motivosity. So that means 42% of the company still hasn't logged in and done their Motivosity. So you're going to be missing out on a lot of information, a lot of good stuff, and also your $10 of award bucks. And those bucks you can actually use for various things. So if you log in and, and look at your Motivosity account, you can figure out what you can use all that for. Some appreciation highlights. So this is our platform for people to recognize each other, not just supervisors and managers recognizing one another, but where you can recognize each other as employees. It's, it's actually a lot of fun. I go in there almost every day just to kind of see who's in there, who's doing the recognition, who's saying, you know, giving people high five for what they're doing, who's for what they're doing, who's helping who. It's actually pretty uplifting. If you're having a bad day, I say, go to motivosity and start looking at all the positivity that's there and see what people are talking about, who's having fun with it, you know? It's also kind of a fun platform. You'll also see a lot of pictures, like I said, from the Employee Appreciation Week last week, people wishing each other happy birthdays, happy anniversaries. You know, it's for a myriad of things. So we really want you guys to take advantage of it. At least go in, check it out. We actually had 877 people to log in. And since it went live, it just went live August 5th. So we're only a little over a month in. And we've already had 1,294 appreciations given. So that's pretty good. And 20% of the 270 users are giving thanks. And then 45% or 541 of users are getting thanks. So again, check it out, it's great. Also, one of the things that we typically do through email or through our internet is living the values. And we're actually going to be doing the Living the Values through motivosity. So it'll make it much quicker. There'll be more rewards during that time. Also, they're going to be somewhat randomly selective because we get quite a few of them on a monthly basis. So we want to be able to do that much more effectively and give thanks and make sure people understand who's getting these awards in a much more timely fashion. The quarterly Living the Values are still on a nomination basis and can be submitted through motivosity. So. One thing that I do want to let everyone know, and this is something totally out of Medawitt's control, is the bucks that you get through that. When you use them, it gets added on as taxable income. You're not taxed on it. But what will show up on your W-2 at the end of the year? If you've used $25 in, or $30 or whatever in your bucks by the end of the year, then you will just see an additional line item that will say, you know, other, whatever it will say on your W-2, but it's other income. So you're not taxed when you get it. It just shows on your W-2 at the end of the year as income that you've received. And this is an IRS guideline. We have checked and checked and checked of, okay, how can we do this with it not be taxable? And there are certain things that are not taxable. So we're also doing like our one-year, five-year, 10-year employee appreciation. The five years and on are not taxable. So there are certain things that we're able to run through the system that are not taxable for IRS guidelines. But again, we're trying to find every way possible to make sure that's not taxable. Also, if you go into the Medawitt store to use your bucks and buy Medawitt gear or whatever, that's not taxable. So again, we're trying, we're trying our best to find every way around those IRS guidelines that we can legally and not get in trouble to make sure that you don't have any of that as taxable income at the end of the year. So, but again, once you do it, it's not taxed at the time you get it. It's just added to your taxable income for the year. So what's to come? As we're starting to wind down the year, one of the key things, even though there's not a lot on this to come, we're gearing up for the last quarter of the year in HR to figure out, okay, what did we learn this year? What do we need to do next year? What can we, what can we plan for? What do we need to have that's different than we did this year to keep our employees engaged and have a happy workforce? And of course, You're the Secret Sauce, which was the slogan for this year's Employee Appreciation Week, and that just, you know, wrapped up last week. October 20th, we'll actually put out our internal employee engagement survey. This will go to everyone. So not just, you know, select few like the Best Places to Work did. This will go out to everyone. And we would really appreciate the feedback. You know, we try to change up some of the open-ended questions and things each year. So we'll have some different questions on there this year. But we want everyone to participate. It is anonymous. We don't know who gives the answers. We don't, you know, we don't have a clue. So we really do want people to be honest and give honest feedback. Because that is the only way that we can, you know, change what we do, get different initiatives within the organization to make sure that we're hearing you and we're giving, you know, giving back to what you're saying. The other thing that happens, of course, this is part of Medawitt Cares. That's another one of the initiatives that we talked about last time, which are some of the benefits and things and some of the health and wellness initiatives that we are going through for going forward with. Open enrollment will be November 3rd through the 14th. During that time, there will be a lot of open enrollment meetings. They'll be virtual. We'll have some live, we'll have some that are recorded. So we want to make sure that everyone will have the information that they need to select whatever benefits that they would like to enroll in for 2026. So open enrollments, November 3rd through the 14th. Anything that's selected during that time would go into effect on 1/1 of 2026. So, and we're in the process right now of trying to finalize what those benefits will look like for next year. So we're really trying our best to, you know, cut costs, not only just in what we're doing from an organization, but for you guys, you know, making sure that your benefits don't increase as much as possible as we can. As we know, everything with, you know, is increasing, it seems like, these days. But we're really trying to find ways to make that not happen for you guys for next year. So more to come on that. We've not finalized everything. We're still in negotiations with our providers, but hopefully, we'll have some good things to be able to offer for our employees and for you guys. Now, it's time for you guys to ask us questions.
Yeah.
Well, I've got some questions, especially on the mid. I'm in like one of the mid-rural hospitals that's sort of work on. And how much more are you going to be expanding into that market? And what opportunities does second create for us as an organization here in South Carolina or even across the board?
Yeah, so I'm going to answer in general terms. What we're hoping to drive, our goal is to drive 15% revenue growth from those specific initiatives by the end of 2027. So in two years, '26 and '27, if you will, like 15% revenue growth between those two years. And we think it's probably staged, like it might be 5% in '26 and then another, you know, 10 in the following year. But we think, you know, we've got the technology, we've got the capabilities, we've got great case studies. I mean, Northern Montana, when we first went there, was over 200 days in AR. You know, we are still at about 100 days AR, so we still have some work to do. But in less than a year, we dropped it to half of what it was. And I think the cooler story with Northern Montana, I mean, that's truly a standalone hospital. I mean, you have to drive an hour and a half to get to the next closest facility from Northern Montana. So you got to think, that place saves lives every single day because of just where it's located, right? By our estimates, we dropped, I think, $7 million in additional income to them that they didn't have before they hired us. So in the first year that they brought us in, you know, so there's one example of a rural hospital that they just didn't have the capabilities and the skills to do a good job at revenue cycle. Their volume's flat. Their volume isn't any higher today than it was a year ago, but we generated an additional $7 million off of that same flat volume for them that they can turn around and reinvest into, you know, medical staff, technology, whatever, to keep caring for patients, right? And they're a nonprofit hospital, so it's not like they're pocketing that money. They're going to turn around and reinvest it in the community. So I think that's just a great case study of what we want to go try to do at other places, right? We can show, here's the value we drove. Hire us, we can do it for you as well. And it may not be, look, Northern Montana was in rough shape when we got there, so I'm not going to say that there's $7 million everywhere. But even if we could drive a million or $2 million in additional funding to a rural facility, that may be the difference between them going out of business or having to sell to a bigger, you know, urban provider or something like that.
What would you think that a good rep would be able to pull in revenue if they were basically trying to work those accounts and collect those payments and things like that? What would you like to see?
I haven't thought about that on a per-employee basis. I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. I'll have to go look at that. I don't have an answer off the top of my head for you. But I can tell you, again, Northern Montana, it's the small little, you know, 80-bed facility, I think, in Montana. And that, they are probably one of our 10 most valuable clients within the first year. So think if we could go just add five of those in the next 18 months. That would be hugely powerful to the organization. I mean, one of those contracts can be the size of like Health Partners. Like Northern Montana is probably, on a revenue basis, pretty, on a pretty even footing with Health Partners, maybe. Check me if I'm, you think I'm wrong on that?
You're right.
So, yeah, I mean, it doesn't take a lot of sales of those for us to really get into a high-growth mode, and that's why we're focused on it. But they're hard sales. It's harder to convince somebody to give you their entire revenue cycle than it is to, say, outsource your, you know, early-out business to us or outsource your bad debt. That's a much easier sale in comparison to give us your entire business office. Great question, though, thank you. Yeah. What else? Yeah?
So going back to like the denial recordings that you want to kind of implement, right? What about for projects that we don't get maybe weekly or daily inventory for? How are people like some of my projects, how would I be able to utilize those same recording features?
Yeah, that is the barrier. So you hit on it, right? We have to get the information from the, we don't direct connect to any payer. We have to go through a pathway to get to a payer, right? So like, we don't get the 835, we don't get the 277. That goes to somebody else, and then it has to get sent to us. So that is the barrier. When we're putting clients on Benchmark, we are trying to upgrade the data feeds that they're giving us so that we can have that data for every Benchmark customer. But that's always going to be a barrier. If we have people that won't give us the 835 data, I can't really give you good denial data or good quality denial data if you don't give me what you have.
And that would be kind of like your talk around for being able to get that data to improve their denials?
Well, yeah, I mean, once we build this, that capability is essentially free. It's just part of you outsourcing your business to us, right? We're going to give you this great intelligence on how to go fix the things you do upfront to get you paid in full, right? So, and that's free of charge. Now, we are trying to think about, is there a way to monetize that? Like, do we maybe even get into consulting? And we're going to have people go actually, have a customer pay us to come in and teach them how to reduce denials. So there could be some opportunities there. We don't have anything. We just need to get it up and running first. And then maybe six months down the road, we'll start to think about, is there more we could, if the data is really good, is there more we could do with it?
It's a great idea. I'm always looking forward to try to figure out how to reduce denials on projects and stuff like that to be able to come back every month with, here's your denial data, and here's how we can fix that, I think is super crucial, and I really like it.
Well, and part of the sale then becomes, look, we're going to teach you how to put us out of business. You're going to hire us, and we're going to give you the data to show you how to prevent denial so that you don't have to keep using us. The reality is the payers are so sophisticated, they'll just figure out a new way to deny claims. So we're never going to work ourselves out of business, but it sounds really good when you're going in and doing a sales pitch, right? All right, yeah.
Yeah, so on the bad debt side of things, right before they implemented the AI system, we took a significant pay cut on that. So then, right now, you know, once he implemented AI, well, right now, we handle a lot of the dirty work for it that either people who don't want to deal with a robot or, you know, things that she can't handle like disputes or, you know, we're too small to ping the clan. Now, is there a plan to get, you know, to get our compensation back up to something that's competitive?
Yes. So short answer is yes. I don't have details on the plan, but I think we're on the cusp of releasing something pretty quickly. I know the management team in Bad Debt has been working on a new plan that they proposed that we approved just a week or two ago.
Yeah, it wasn't, I think, last week?
Yeah, so we will be, I don't have the details. I'm not versed in it well enough to discuss it with you, but there will be something new coming out in the next few days. All right, what else? Yeah?
You mentioned that we would, instead of actually doing the work, we would just be supervisors. What exactly does that entail? Would we just be watching it actually go through and kind of get into?
I think it'd be much more engaged than that. It'll be more guided work, is what I would say. So even like today, so think back, two years ago, if we wanted to know the status of a claim, you had to go out to the website of the payer, you had to pick up the phone and call the payer. We're at a point today where more often than not, through data exchange with the payers, we're able to tell you the reason the claim hasn't paid. We're able to give you a current status. We're able to tell you it's denied or it's not denied, no claim on file, claim in process. We're able to give you some sort of information when you pull up the account that may prevent that phone call to the insurance company or may prevent you from having to go do a web check on the status, right? So this is sort of the next evolution of that that I foresee is, it's like, okay, we went on a vacation recently, and my wife literally went into some AI bot and said, here's where we're going, here's, you know, the ages of our kids. Give me a six-day, day-by-day itinerary of fun stuff to do for us every day. And it came back and did it. We still have to go do it, right? But it was a recommendation. So I think that's more what we're talking about is some of the work is going to be done. You still have to make a decision of, what status code am I going to apply? What's the next thing that needs to be done to get this account resolved? What's the next thing that needs to be done to get this account resolved? We may have recommendations, but those recommendations may not be accurate. So, just like the itinerary we got, we might look at and say, okay, that's a suggestion. We don't like that. We don't want to do that. We're going to change up the itinerary and do what we want to do, right? Or, this appeal letter that got written totally missed the point, and I need to go either throw it in the trash and rewrite it, or I need to change three or four things in the appeal letter before it goes out the door. That's kind of the, that's what I'm saying, you're going to be doing less specific work and more kind of looking at, okay, the computer did some of this work for me, but is it right or wrong? Just like, we have a status that's already there when you pull up the account. Is it the right status? Is it the wrong status? Back to the example I gave of, you get like a generic denial code that tells you nothing. You still have to then go in and dive in and work the account. Other times, you might get something that's really helpful that tells you how to fix the problem. So, I think it's just, you're going to have to do less work to get to the end result, but you're still going to have to think and apply yourself and say, okay, what do I need to do next to make sure this account gets paid or written off or whatever the right resolution is? Yeah.
So, majority of these changes are going to be happening within the insurance side of things, not really migrating into EVO side?
Yeah, I think that's fair for the...
Just making sure we're getting that connection there.
Yeah.
Because a lot of the denials, like we see denials, obviously, on EVOs and all that. We can look into it, see those codes, and kind of explain to the patient what's going on. But we don't get to go in and navigate through those denials and everything. That's something that our insurance seems to do with the other client.
Yep, no, that's, and that is not going to be in early out. So, the things I was just talking about are all going to be insurance, and specifically, it's going to be Benchmark functionality. So, even if you're working on an Artiva client, unless we move that client from Artiva over to Benchmark, you're not going to get that automation.
I think from an EVO perspective, we're working on what we call Agent Assist, which is utilized in some of the AI, could load the crap stuff from our webpages or adaptation to kind of supply some of those suggestions on scripting and working to the patient. So, it wouldn't be the direct thing that Jeff's talking about, but being able to print our library from our clients or how we handle a denial and typically log a patient through, and be able to generate that other screen to you to give you little help with that, even though it's not the same, still kind of the same with the EVO or liar.
I mean, candidly, I think part of where we're going to end up migrating in EVO and bad debt next is probably written communication more. As we move more into text, we're looking at, how do we do a better job of instantaneous two-way text and chat and things like that so that somebody's not responding to our text and then waiting two days for us to respond back to them?
My chart emails and messages that we've been implementing.
Yes. We'll be doing more and more of that, I think, over time. And to the extent that there's intelligence we can introduce into that, it'll probably be more around what's the right way to reach out to someone or connect with someone? Like, certain people prefer phone calls, certain people prefer text, right? What's the best way to get somebody to actually interact with us and respond to us? Yeah?
I was going to ask, I had a lot of customers as EVO that would really like it if we were able to text them rather than call. Is there going to be a way in the future that we can send texts if that's a process?
Yeah, so we have an active team working on, I guess, what we call omni-channel communications across both Bad Debt and early out. The challenge right now is we're doing some of that in different areas of the company, but we're using different vendors for everything. So, we're trying to say, is there like a single platform technology-wise that we can go out and do email, text, chat, all these things on a single platform so you're not having to kind of cobble together the solution from multiple vendors? So, we're definitely interested in figuring that out, and there's an active team working on searching the marketplace to say, what would the best technology solutions be there?
That's something that we're working on as well. Currently have support with some of those partners that are easily collect our, they're sure, actually, when our mobile partner, TIO, do some real-time translation services. But looking as we continue evolving with different areas and different languages, they will have those as well through the chat pot and stuff, so set up them if they don't.
All right. I know we're over on time, so maybe one or two more? All right, give a shout-out to my favorite football team, the Cowboys. Thanks, everyone.